Thank you. Welcome to the regular meeting of our school board on June 1st, 2021. May I have a roll call, please? Melissa Clark, present. Rebecca Haynes, here. Diane Salter, here. Kukuli Smith-Kolada, here. Hillary Stokowski, here. Jeff Zofe, here. Jan Meek, here. Carly Stone, here. Diane Zedan, here. Ethel Prohydrer, here. Lisa Young, here. Not stand for the president.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I welcome any public comments and questions on agenda business. Let me check to see here. I do not have any hands raised for question. Thank you, Maria. We have our superintendent's report next.
Thank you. The first topic I have is on the bond and my preliminary preliminary qualification application. I'm ready to go. This is me for a motion. I want to thank the facilities committee. I just want to thank the Board of Education for making the necessary changes to the scope and advising us. Next on the list after preliminary qualification application in July is to adopt a resolution calling the election. So that is scheduled for July 19th. Additionally, the district after that will go into factual campaign mode and we have additional community forums for the community for questions and answers. So that's kind of our timeline going forward into the fall. For COVID, this is very positive news. So we ended up the school year, we had zero cases and zero quarantine numbers. So that hasn't happened since almost a year. So that's very refreshing news. Our intention is not to keep track of COVID numbers during the summer, so we're discontinuing that. And we recently sent out a letter this afternoon outlining that we're wearing masks as an option for our summer school program and our athletics. So what could change? The potential for change is there for mask option. I can see what the guidance comes out from the NDHHS and the governor's orders and some tweets to that. We're hoping for a mask option for fall, but we'll see what the guidance says in the upcoming week. It might come out beginning of this week or it might come out beginning of the fall. Additionally, I just want to thank everyone, everyone involved in this whole school year. It's been a fantastic school year. We had some issues to go through and handled it very well and confident and made the right decisions and keeping our buildings open and also providing the best resources that we could for our students, both in person and virtual. So I just want to thank everyone once again. I appreciate you for the school year and we look forward to next year.
I just have a question. Move back to the bond. You said the community forums starting when you thought?
I'm thinking that for the district factual campaign and as we move forward, we give additional opportunities for the community forums, starting in September and October, so that we have more time to answer any question anybody would have about the bond, bond scope, and anything we're trying to do.
Thank you. And to follow up on Diane's question, do you have, and I know we have other discussions to have along this line, but from a general framework, do you have a suggestion as to when we have our yes committee with boots on the ground?
Yeah, so that yes committee with parallel and district factual campaign. And so whoever is part of that organization that, as that might materialize by a group of individuals in the district, that would probably start in August, sometime in August.
That's what I was thinking. All right. Perfect. Does anybody have any other questions for Dr. Hydrick and either of those topics?
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Now we move on to the approval of the consent agenda. May I have a motion?
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support. Thank you. May I have a roll call though? Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haynes, yes. Diane Salter, yes. Kukuli Smith-Kolada, yes. Hillary Stokowski, yes. Jeff Zofe, yes. Lisa Young, yes. I apologize, I failed to ask for discussion on that. Does anybody have any for discussion on that? I need to circle back if you want. Okay. Thank you. Motion passes. Next, we move on to our information and discussion items. From a Board of Education report, I simply wanted to in turn thank Dr. Hydrick and the team, everybody, Carly, Diane, the entire administrative team and everyone else. In person, we did in our video, tried to acknowledge everyone, all the stakeholders in our community and our district, but with the three of you present, I just wanted to pass along a heartfelt thank you for such a year, such a year. Couldn't have done it without your leadership, so thank you for that. The only other item I wanted to address is graduation. Graduation once again went off very well, I thought. A little warm, but that's outside the norm of our group. And you could just tell, I think, a vibe in the stadium. I don't think it was just me perceiving it. There was a definite vibe despite the heat and all. There wasn't a full lot of complaining because I think people just felt very fortunate to be there. And so we appreciate that and to the team who was involved. And that's all I have. Finance report by Jan. Jan, 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 you've been busy. Thank you for everything.
Thanks. Tonight is our annual, let's hold them here, our annual budget hearing and truth and taxation hearing. It's called. There it is. Okay.
Maria, can we move that one off in the corner?
Thanks.
Yes.
And again, by law, the board must approve a budget, next year's budget by June 13th of the current year. And also we must hold a hearing on our tax levy for the 2021 hearing, or 2021 tax year. So thanks, Maria. So few statements. Tonight is the truth and taxation hearing. We're going to give you a summary of our general fund, a summary of our student activity fund, food service fund, and general care fund. We'll have to start with our property tax levy. Our non-homestead tax levy in Brandon, we levy 17.8706 mils. It's slightly less than the 18 mils that the state assumes that you levy. We did have a heavily rolled back, as it's called, a few years ago. So we levy just slightly less than we're allowed to or that the state assumes. And that levy costs us about $20,000 a year, which is not a huge amount. Our non-homestead property value, which is our commercial value for this tax levy year, 2021, 153 million, and that's an increase of about 2% over last year. On our debt side, we're staying the same at 12.16 mils on all property and taxable value of 698 million, almost 699 million, and an increase of 3.8% this year over last year. I hope you can see that okay. What you're approving tonight is all of the levies. So the operating levy is 17.8706. The expiration date on the right-hand side, 2024. Every six years, the district has to go up to the taxpayers and ask for a renewal on our operating levy. So we're good until 2024. The 2016 refunding bond, the second line there, that's actually the 2006 voted bond, and we're levying 4.28 mils on that. The principal outstanding is just under 10 million, and the expiration date, that will be paid off in 2024. 2018 refunding was originally the 1996 voted bond in the community. And the mils that we're levying on that is 2.32, principal standing 6.6 million, and that will be paid off in 2025. The 2019 refunding, we did just less than two years ago, and that was to save us interest on our school bond loan fund. We've been borrowing from the school bond loan fund to pay the debt. That's just very small, 0.82 mils, principal standing 25 million, and that goes until 2029. And then the last one was the most recent refunding that we did, and that's the 2021. We refunded again the school bond loan fund because the interest rates have again dropped. And then part of our 2016, we were able to refund and get a better interest rate. So 4.74 there, principal standing 50 million, and that one goes to 2035. That's our biggest, our longest term one. So that's where we get the 12.16 mils. I thought it might be valuable to understand where that 12.16, what that was comprised of. So it's comprised of those four debt refunding, and that's all property in the district. And of course, the operating again is just on non-homestead property. Any questions on this?
Just maybe just taking some time. In 2024, in my understanding that our bills could drop before, that's not the way I remember the chart showing.
No, that's just every year, you know, RJ, he got the 12.16 and then the pieces switch around. So the way he's got a plan to offset that wouldn't drop off.
That would not. So we're looking in, right now, keeping things the same.
Right.
2035?
No, if we, per the chart, we're going to, to the difference, if we did nothing, 2029, 2030, we could potentially see a small drop.
There's a small drop.
Yeah. But everything would be paid off in 2035 if that was a question.
Yeah, yeah, everything would be if we did nothing.
Did nothing else, there would crack. There would be zero mils.
Be zero mils?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
So now, we'll switch gears here and talk about our general fund budget assumptions, you know, getting the, just a high level where we fund balance, that type of stuff. We've been talking about this for a few months now, so none of this is a surprise. We've incorporated in our next year's budget, a state per pupil increase of $164 a student. Unfortunately, the state has not finalized that, so that's just what's in this budget. We're hoping for more. Enrollment decline of 75 students, again, that's just an assumption that we're making, but we think we're being conservative with that as well. Our Public Act 18 money, a decrease. We're assuming no change in categorical funding and no special education cost adjustment. Those things, we haven't, we don't expect that, but you never know when they actually do the final state budget. And the last one is a big one. Right now, if all of the assumptions were to come true or be exact, we would be looking at filling in about a million three of our SIR money in order to have a balanced budget, which is the goal every year. So if anything comes in better, per pupil or enrollment decline is a lot better, we would not need to use as much SIR money.
So is that enrollment decline predicted predominantly like kindergarteners coming in, like less coming? Is that what that predicts or what is?
Yeah, it's the graduating, it's the attrition.
Going out and then the young?
Yes, yes. And then, and then actually padding it a little bit, just because we like to have a little bit of, if that number's maybe 40, we go 75 because you just never know for sure.
Sure.
So that's just something, and that was part of the board discussion a couple of months ago, and the board gave us a directive that they would like to use that number. And we typically do that. We would rather come in ahead than use a number like 20 and, you know, have this.
Sure.
Good with this one? Again, this budget tonight that you'll be approving, we've got 100,000 in capital outlay, which is not a lot, but that's just, we always put something in there. Things tend to go, could go wrong. Technology, 40,000. We're going to spend more than that, but we're getting refunded. That's our cost. We participate in E-rate and they pick up 60 to 70% of the cost of a project. Our building security costs us about $225,000. That includes the police liaison plus one security person at the entrance of every building. Negotiations, again, this was discussed, we have a number of 500,000 in the budget. Textbooks, 50,000. And then transfers, 80,000. Our food service fund is able to help the general fund, so again, about 80,000. And not projecting any transfers out. That's all good. 5.2 instructional staff reductions, we've discussed. We have a new OLE swim management contract, $55,000. That's in the budget. The next one, our virtual vendors cost does have to do with the current pandemic, and we have 240,000, but that number is a work in progress. So when we do a budget amendment, that could change slightly. We're still, we're still working. It's the best number I have when I was putting this together. Our medical costs gone up 3.8%, and our retirement cost at 28.23 is getting creeping up, you know. So for every dollar we pay in payroll, we pay 28 cents, 28.23 cents to the state.
And what's that increase from?
Well, not that much this year. This year it was a little over 28, but it wasn't that long ago. It was, you know, 22, 23, so it's been, it's been creeping up every year. It's a significant cost for every district, not just ours.
So I have a naive question. Is there ever, is there ever a cap on it?
No, because we have, well, not that I know, Carl, but the state has an obligation.
I know healthcare has a cap, but not on?
The retirement system, it just depends on what the fund looks like and their projections and all of their finance people that do that, because we have an obligation to pay.
And to clarify, it is a mandated percentage per dollar that must be contributed, correct?
Yeah, they determine all of that, say. We're not allowed to opt out of the retirement system.
Sure. And I'm not suggesting that by one iota. I'm just trying to understand where that number has been and where it could go and how that affects what we can, our budget in paying current present salary for our staff.
Yeah. It's definitely a big part of our budget.
Very good. Thank you.
And this budget includes making our IP and energy bond payments next year, that are 408,470. One less pay, or one less, few bullet points on the general fund. We are seeing a bus payment reduction. We've paid off, I talked about that, the 15 buses we bought back in 13, 14. The last payment was last July, so that's helpful right now. We're hoping to get a few more years out of those buses. For student, transportation contract is increasing to 100% as we've discussed in our custodial contract. It went down because we've decided not to have the extra five custodians in the district. So that's kind of, that's the highlights of the general fund. And then to put it all into one summary sheet here, we're projecting an operating surplus this year of about 71,000. Next year, an operating surplus of zero. That's why we're using that SIR money to balance our budget next year. So no surplus. Fund balance this year, still looking good. We're going to end about 4 million, 195, 135, or 15.86%. Next year would be the same because we're not planning on adding anything in 16.11. You might wonder why it's the same, that the formula for the fund balance is a fund balance divided by revenue. So as revenue changes, the percentage changes a little bit, but we're still have a very good fund balance. The board years ago decided to assign a fund balance of $2 million. We still have that. That has never been changed. So that's still a board, it was a voted board action. So our unassigned fund balance is a little over 2 million, or 8.3%, 8.43%. Any questions on the general fund numbers? Okay, real quick. Student activity is all of our student council and our KTO, you know, those types of funds. We now have to, by law, I'm required to present to you some numbers on the student activity, and they're part of the resolution. So we have 150 student activity accounts. Last year, audited number, we ended up with, we have 425,829. That's all total. This year, we're projecting about, a fund balance of about $455,000, so gone up a little bit. And then next year, I just kind of took a stab, about 490. So we seem to be, while we are bringing in more money than we're spending every year, so maybe talking to the council's office a little bit. They're saving it if it's a rainy day fund. So those are good, and we have them broken down, every activity account, every club, we have their own separate financials on, so we know exactly where they're at. Food service, our food service has done a great job. This year, we had breakfast and lunch each. They served curbside pickup, 30,316 meals to the community. That's really good. That was starting last September, but didn't even include last summer. In person, we served breakfast, 40,000, 237. When you're working on a campaign, I know Monica is open county, we'd like to see the breakfast numbers go up. That's just something the whole state's working on. Lunch, 130,653 meals served, so. And the federal government has helped us out every, as everyone's aware, we do not charge. We did not charge this year. Every student gets a free lunch and next year as well. And pre-pandemic, the government was, federal government reimbursed us breakfast, $2.26, lunch, $3.58. They upped the reimbursement, so that's helped our revenue, to $2.37 for breakfast and $4.15 for lunch. So we are, our food service fund is doing, okay, doing well.
Can I just confirm? So they have announced that they're going to offer free meals for next school year?
Correct.
Okay. So that's probably where that lunch number is significantly different, because we had a lot more, free lunches being given, that more people were able to take advantage of it, I assume.
Isn't the breakfast free too, though?
It's all free.
Yeah, so breakfast and lunch are for next year? Is it just?
It's the whole, no, it's just, it's breakfast and lunch. It's the whole, it's, yeah, we are not charging anybody.
So about 200,000 meals were free and given out.
Yeah. And next year, I anticipate we would have a lot more because we're going to have more students in the building. We had, a third of our kids were at home, so they weren't, you know, they might have been, they were part, some of them, part of the curbside pickup, so those numbers go down. And we will, obviously, I think everyone, we will be continuing curbside pickup all summer, so that's all good. Okay, so food service, just again, bottom line, we're looking at an operating surplus of about 74,000 this year. A lot of that does have to do with the, you know, reimbursement rates were so high. Next year, trying to spend a little bit of that money, so looking at a slight deficit. Fund balance, food service this year, about 390,852, very healthy. Next year will go down a tad, 370,000. And again, the operating transfer to general fund, anticipating 80,000 this year and 80,000 next year. Real quick, we're allowed to transfer 15% of the food service expenditures except for food. So take out the food costs and then 15% of everything else, we're allowed to transfer back to the general fund. That's the goal. So they help us out. Last, just real quick, childcare fund highlights. We run a latchkey program, 6:30 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. We charge $5.50 an hour. That's been pretty, we haven't had to increase that in a while. Summer latchkey, Honey's got some campers over there. Before school, our numbers were obviously down this year due to the pandemic and all of that, so we just had 37 students. After school, about 21. Our tuition preschool students, we were about half this year, as typical, again, because of the pandemic. We had 32 full day, seven half day, and seven virtual. What helped us this year tremendously is we did receive, Diane applied for, and we did receive federal grants, federal revenue, three or four different ones. So our childcare fund this year, we have 104,800 dollars from the federal government. We've never had that before. And next year, not, zero, not expecting anything next year unless they come out with a new program. So even though our enrollment was down, we were still able to run a solid program and stay balanced financially because of the federal help. So we're looking at a slight operating surplus this year, about 18,000. Next year, about 2,600. Our fund balance going into this year was zero. We had, yeah, we had spent everything last year. So again, fund balance, 18,000 next year, then at the end of '21, '22, we would add a little bit, so 21,000. And what's super important is the operating transfer from the general fund is nothing. By law, the, we are not allowed to run a deficit balance in any of our funds like food service or childcare. So if childcare, for example, were to run a deficit, the general fund would be required to transfer to that fund. So that, our goal is always to break even there. Any questions?
I just want to give one more thing. Yeah. You know, Janie asked me for input, and I forgot to. Just so you know, that one of the other grants that I wrote was for tuition reimbursement for parents. And so we were able to reimburse parents who were paying tuition the month of September, $20,000.
That was part of the 104,000.
Oh, it was?
Yeah. Part of the, well, when they give you.
That went directly to parents, though, as opposed to the programs.
When they give you the money, they say, sometimes they say, this is how you have to use it. And one of those grants, they did say that we had used, and so it was, but yeah, it was all great.
Thank you for that.
What a great program. You've got going there, rockin', rollin', the word of gold. Good, thank you for doing all that. I really appreciate it.
Yeah, the childcare program was great.
Sorry, one more question.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. So that is all on the annual budget hearing. Do we have a playground update?
I do, real quick on the financial end.
Okay.
And then Diane, just leading into next month, where we're at, as you know, we were awarded, or the board approved the award of $90,340 for the current urban playground. That included a $5,000 contingency. We've got some items here that are going to go, the total are going to go over the $5,000. So we've got to remove some trees, we have to replace the stone pathway with concrete, and then we have to remove the old equipment. So we don't think it's going to go a lot over the $5,000. We just wanted to give the board a heads up that we will be completing the project, and then next month, we will be asking for the board to approve an amended contract. And it may be 2 or 3,000, but we are not talking a big number, but just wanted to give you a heads up. And Diane gets to do the fun stuff.
Yeah. I'll do the fun stuff. So just, the playground was finished last week, and so the students get to play with it, lay on it, and the parents get to see it because we get our end of year gatherings outside. So there, just clipper, I just did. I didn't have any pictures of something. So the new playground pieces that we've added were a main climbing structure, a musical diaphragm, and drums. Sandbox was enlarged by three times. In fact, Lance said this is the largest playground, sandbox he's ever put in. My teachers are like trying to figure out a way to cover it now, so we've got to come up with a new system. I'm starting a couple of these years. It was really heavy to cover. There's a new swing set with eight swings total on that. All the areas are accessible to wheelchairs and, you know, people around it. And then we added a concrete track for tricycle and accessibility, and then the new pieces integrate well with the old pieces. Just show you something. So these are musical instruments, and I'm actually working on some music. I think it goes from C through C, so I'm going to tell you some songs that we can put out so we could, I could play songs and kind of find out. I don't have any musical, you know, soundpools. I'm checking with Lance, but there are kettle drums and others, so I'll go. This is the sandbox. It was a third of that, and it's great. I mean, kids will play in the sandbox forever. But if you see that picture, oh, go back a second.
Oh, I want to talk to them right. Okay, they're on the button.
Okay. We see that red climber is an old piece, and then one in the background is a new piece. So you see sort of they integrate very nicely. And they just build it all together, so it's all one playground area. And they just build it all together, so it's all one playground area. Right. This is a picture of the new one. See, I took these pictures today, it was gray, sorry. I think I had to, so, yeah. So you have swings and climbers and lots of cool things. The backside of it, on the street. Telefights, pickles. Yep. And, so this is the swing set. Again, you have the same color swing scheme, and you see the ramp that goes into the area, and there's one swing for handicap, but I'll leave you with a big roll. It's a nice bunch of them. And then you see the new concrete, nothing like new concrete, I don't know what they are.
Yeah.
New concrete, it's nice. So you see this pathway goes around the whole area, and the kids can do a nice circle around. Concrete area, goes into that main area, nice circle around back, and there's also concrete going up to the building. So that's the whole, the whole thing. There's some trees on the left-hand side of that building that we're going to take out, there's a map there.
That's their life?
Yeah, live their life long. And then, okay, and then the new changes we're going to continue, we're going to remove the old swing set, that's going to, when they do the, the system, I think? Subtext?
Yeah.
Sitting around here, I'm thinking, what are they?
They're out there right now.
Okay. Removed their three dead pine trees, and we want to add trees in the basie area, so, she really looked at it. So, you know, and they, so out in the area there, where there's green space and where the old swing set is, that's where we make some trees out there, we place those pines also. And then, for the old swing set, just doesn't go. Yeah, get rid of that, and those things, and then, you'll see the kids, how much they have fun, they're happy. I mean, they love playing on those little instruments, getting used to the sound, they're good, very fun. They have these talking things, too, I forgot about those. They have, there's one on the playground area, and then there's one on the plate, on this climber.
Oh, wow.
They're having, oh, yeah, they play telephone.
Oh, my God.
I mean, yeah. Slides on the slides, and we're well-known when, even the old stuff, they have checked out all the new stuff. And this swing is being used, nice shady area there, you have a screen there. Enjoying, yeah? They have their new musicals, they really love those. Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you.
Thanks Diane.
Diane, I have to say, my neighbor walks, how are these walks? I just heard Santa Maria Night. She goes, oh, look at it, beautiful. She said that was such a cool thing, she didn't see it through the fence, she just complimented it. I said, yeah, brand new on what they're doing there, but she just said it looks really nice, the setup, from what she saw, she did her walk over there. That was neat.
Penny's using it, I don't know, but somebody young gets good.
Well, that's perfect. That's perfect. Thank you to everybody who's involved in spiriting that and making it happen. Do we have anything else on the playground update? Okay, then we've got the food service contract, Jan?
Yeah, our food service contract, the last one that the board approved, was a three-year contract. This coming year, twenty-one, twenty-two, will be our third year, and we had a wage opener. So we have discussed, and they've ratified, and will come to the board next month for approval, a three percent increase for twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-two, twenty-three, and stuffs. We've just talked about the food service fund, can afford that for sure, and if we, so that's what was discussed, and that's what their union, they agreed to, so we would like to present that to the board in July.
They work hard, you know, like everything, like they.
Yeah, they were here right from the beginning.
Sure. And I apologize, you said to speak up for the next, for the fourth year, right?
Yeah, it'll be, the twenty-one, twenty-two, and the twenty-two, twenty-three, three percent each year, and stuffs.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I just, is there anything else?
That's all I had on the food service contract.
So that'll just be a two, go up to a three-year contract, to a two-year contract? Is that what?
Yeah, yeah.
No, it's fine, I just wanted to.
Yeah.
That's great.
Okay, thank you so much for everything, Jan. I really appreciate it, you threw this and explaining it to us, thank you. Next, we have our education report with Carly.
Okay. So per usual, let's talk about what we've accomplished, what we're working on, and what we're looking forward to and recognizing with this period of lockdown, this will be a short presentation. What we've accomplished, we completed the school year, which I think is amazing, providing in-person K-12 instruction all year long, as well as a rich undergrowth for the new home program. So super proud of that and everybody that made it happen. Obviously, we had a tremendous graduation day, a little hot and sweaty, but it was worth every moment, to see the grins on the students' faces and the celebrations from their families. At our press meeting, I mentioned, we were pretty confident that we had good numbers of students that tested on our state assessments. As you know, we highly recommend it and encourage students to participate, but it was not a requirement. Now, if I'm counting the numbers, eighty-three percent of the students that were eligible to test their three-year, three-year unstuck, kind of, three-year unstuck assessment, did do some, completed all assessments. So, again, we're excited to get that data back, so that we can look at an inspection and see what we need to do, and what can get our plan to improve. So I feel like that's a good, really nice amplifies for us, so we can make some good decisions. What we're working on, summer programming, so high school credit recovery began today. We're excited, we have a middle school, DLA, and MAP program that will be running for intervention for students in August. And then we also have our elementary program that will also be running in August, August third through the nineteenth. We are still working through our brand and learn from home programming for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. So continuing to refine staffing, numbers, virtual options for students, et cetera, so enjoying all the dialogue in that process and moving forward. And then we're also processing our end-of-year state reporting, with also a awful lot that we have to ensure that we're compliant with for the state and the DED, so we're looking through all of those, and getting those submitted timely. And then what we're looking forward to is a review of that state assessment data, we're anticipating, I heard that our college board data will be released toward the end of July, July twenty-third, twenty-fourth, and April, to Friday, and that. And we still don't quite have word on our unstuck data, but that's a big concern later in August for us. Looking forward to that. And then in our July meeting, we look forward to providing the board and our community that have way in, way in, way in, way in programming up through kindergarten school year. And I kind of resist, because they're just way too cute. And it's one of the beautiful ones we saw in the fall, being their first day of kindergarten, and a couple of them had finished their last day of kindergarten, and we have a really cute little first grade. So that's what we're here for, that's what it's all about, and just really happy that we had a very successful, happy, and safe school year for all of our students, so thank you.
It was neat to see in the citizen, the virtual teachers. I think somewhat maybe finally getting to meet some of their students and handing things off, that was nice to see. And do we know numbers for brand and learn from home yet, like a percentage, for next year?
We, we had seven hundred spent this school year this year, and we have around one hundred and forty students for brand and learn from home and summit virtual, so for next year. So the numbers for brand and learn from home, I believe, probably around one twenty-five or so, and then around fifteen for summit. So that is what we're working through, because the dynamics of that and staffing will be much different from all the other trip for next, next school.
And are those across all grades?
Yeah, those are across all grades, so if you look at that hundred and twenty-five, you average that out, you're looking at an average of ten or so per grade level. It makes it a little bit more challenging to try to range this, so it's taking a little bit more time, but that's our top priority going into the fall, is to make sure we can accommodate all families through virtual.
So then, by default, or choosing the other five hundred, and some students have come back face-to-face in brand?
They're coming back in person.
Not, we're not going all the way.
Yes, they are coming back to, they're staying with their schools, and so it's important for us to ensure they're accommodating their families for virtual, so.
So maybe, I don't understand if you don't have the answer to this quite yet, but understanding on average, it's about ten, do we have a feeling if it's more weighted towards, say, elementary, just?
It's surprisingly very similar across the, across the grade, but you might have like a six or seven, and a thirteen or fourteen.
Sure.
But if we average it out, I was very surprised that this is kind of.
Have you thought of doing splits?
Yeah, so we're, well, we're looking at potentially multi-age, like from like an elementary to low five, or two, three, that's a possibility, and we're also being a bit creative at the secondary level, most of us, I'd probably try to get some core mentoring time for core teachers, and also have a core, at least, for brand and learn from home. So work in progress, but again, that's at the top of this for us.
Yeah, I know there's lots of, lots of solutions out there that I would never even imagine, and this has probably been discussed, but for the upper grades, is it possible to include the learn from home with technology actually in the classroom? So realizing that can be, there are concerns that have to be worked out with that as well, but, I mean, once you get to high school, everything is everywhere.
Yeah, so that's a model we explored, and we may have some of that, but we also may have all of virtual too.
Sure, okay.
So we're kind of looking at three or four different models and trying to navigate our way through and see what makes sense for us.
Right, right. Excellent. Thank you for your work on that, so. I have one question, uh, the feeling MAP, which I think is great that we're doing it for the school, and my only question is that, some of the parents have to recognize and sign them up, or have you guys kind of identified some students and have reached out to those parents that would say this might benefit them, or how is that signed?
A little bit of both, great question. So we actually looked, we reached out to our fifth-grade teachers, and said, talk to us about your accident, fifth graders, do you have somewhere struggling with that in DLA, who might they be? And so we have those names now through the, we are getting six and seven years. We had some families reach out, saying they were looking for support, so we included them on the list, but then if they did not reach out for support, we have called the families, like Mr. Tucker, who's personally made the phone calls to families and invited them to participate this summer, with our random teachers that will be facilitating in-person instruction to support them in August, so the boost before this way of being.
Right.
Really tiny bump up with our fifth graders coming up, so.
Right.
Part of my school, if the teachers have provided, you know, you to know.
If there's coming up that this is the last year of another school, and you have, you know, geared up for high school, so. I'm excited if you guys are giving that, so. So are rising ninth graders, is this available for rising ninth graders, or rising?
Right now, if we're probably going to focus on middle grades.
Okay, just wanted to.
Middle grades, please, and also.
Very good, just wanted to, thank you. Anything else for Carly? All right, thank you so much, appreciate the thorough report. We have action items next on our agenda. Our first is the approval of extended COVID-nineteen continuity of learning plan. May I have motion?
Move the Brandon Board of Education, approve the extended COVID-nineteen continuity plan as presented.
Second.
Any discussion on this? All right, may I have a roll call vote, please? Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haines?
Yes.
Diane Zalter?
Yes.
Cameron Smith Colada?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zolke?
Yes.
Lisa Gallo?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion passes. Our next item is approval of the second reading, sixth-month policy update. May I have a motion?
Move the Brandon Board of Education, approve the second reading of the sixth, sixth-month policy update as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Any comment? No? Okay. Then may I have a roll call vote? Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haines?
Yes.
Diane Zalter?
Yes.
Cameron Smith Colada?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zolke?
Yes.
Lisa Gallo?
Yes.
And before I move on, I'll just thank the policy committee, because I know that that is some hard, long work. So thank you, everybody who's involved, much appreciated. Our next item is the adoption of the final twenty-twenty, twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one budget.
Move the Brandon Board of Education, approve to adopt the final twenty-twenty dash twenty-twenty-one budget as presented.
Support.
Any discussion?
Thanks, Jan, the team.
Exactly. Okay, hearing, no further discussion, may I have a roll call vote? Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haines?
Yes.
Diane Zalter?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colada?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zolke?
Yes.
Lisa Gallo?
Yes.
Motion passes. Our next item is the adoption of the proposed twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two budget. May I have a motion?
Move the Brandon Board of Education, approve to adopt the proposed twenty-twenty-one-dash-twenty-twenty-two budget as presented.
Support.
Discussion? Hearing none, may I have a roll call vote? Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haines?
Yes.
Diane Zalter?
Yes.
Cameron Smith Colada?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zolke?
Yes.
Lisa Gallo?
Yes.
Motion passes. Our next item is the approval of the twenty-twenty-one tax levy. May I have motion?
Move the Brandon Board of Education, approve the twenty-twenty-one L four zero two nine tax levy as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, may I have a roll call vote? Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haines?
Yes.
Diane Zalter?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colada?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zolke?
Yes.
Lisa Gallo?
Yes.
Thank you. Our last item of action items is the approval of the preliminary qualification application. Motion, please.
I move that this board approve the application for preliminary qualification of bond as presented by the administration, and that the board secretary sign and have the same filed with the Michigan Department of Treasury.
Second.
Thank you, any discussion?
And basically, that's the list you just talked about in your, on the bond, you have the scope, thank you for all the input on that, getting that done.
Yeah, and the, the application itself is extensive, so thank you for all the work that's going into that. So with that, may I have a roll call vote? Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haines?
Yes.
Diane Zalter?
Yes.
Cameron Smith Colada?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.[1742.72]